Welcome to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. There are a few who are on the phone. Ringers. Also, please be polite to other stakeholders. No applause, no booing, no cheering. If you are attending in person and wish to speak, fill out a speaker information form and give to the planning staff before the start of the meeting. Forums are on the table next to the door. The commission chair will call you at the appropriate time. My eyes aren't that good. Thank you. If you are attending online and wish to speak, raise your hand in the team's chat and provide your name, address, and agenda item number you would like to address. The commission chair will call you at the appropriate time. Your microphone will otherwise remain muted. In-person speakers must come to the podium when called by the commission chair. Use the microphone to capture your comments. Each elected county supervisor appoints three commissioners to staggered four-year terms. Up to three commissioners are from cities, at least six commissioners are from unincorporated areas. A commissioner services pro bono. A quorum is five commissioners. Special use docket decisions. These are approved by the commission. A majority vote passes a motion. A tie vote triggers a rehearing at the next meeting. Appeals of special use decisions are heard by the Board of Supervisors. Appeal procedures can be found on the county's website. For additional assistance, contact Development Services. For other docket decisions, other than special use requests, result in a recommendation forwarded by the commission to the Board of Supervisors. A majority vote passes a motion, a tie vote fails. To voice an opinion regarding a recommendation, you may attend the Board of Supervisors' public We observe the following time limits. Each speaker is limited to five minutes for call to public, 10 minutes for applicant statement, five minutes for supporters or those opposed, and five minutes for applicant Thank you. Are there any comments on last month's minutes? Any corrections? Hearing none? Take a motion, please.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Limbach, how do you vote on the minutes?
Aye.
Mr. Montgomery?
Aye, to approve.
Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Mr. Young, are you with us?
Aye, yes ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Vicket?
Aye.
Mr. Martzki?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Minutes from last month are approved. This is the time for call to public. Pursuant to ARS Section 38-431.01H, this is an opportunity for the public to comment. Individuals are invited to address the commission on any issue within the commission's jurisdiction. Since commissioners may not discuss items that are not specifically identified on the agenda, commission action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter, responding to any criticism, or scheduling the matter for further consideration and decision at a later date. Do we have any speakers for call to public not an agenda item? Hearing none? Let's move to the public hearing portion for docket items on the agenda.
Madam Chair, we did have a speaker request for call to the public, and we have CJ Wallace. If you could unmute your microphone.
And Mr. Wallace, did you want to speak on the items on the agenda or a generalized call to public statement?
Items on the agenda. I actually had a message that said I can address both at later time during this session.
All right, sir. We'll call on you at item one and two, just to make sure. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you.
At this time, could we please have the planning director's report for RZ 24-23, Purdy Lane?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, this is the staff presentation for docket RZ 24-23, an applicant-initiated request to downzone property from R36 to RU4. The applicant is Patrick Wilson. The property is located on Purdy Lane. That would be parcel number 10253017. Current zoning again is R36. The proposed zoning is RU4. The growth area is rural, and the plan designation is low-density residential per the Naco area plan. The property is currently undeveloped, and the proposed use is a single-family residence utilizing the county's owner-builder program. Property is located approximately two and a half miles south of our location, on Purdy Lane, about one-half mile east of Naco Highway. Again, the south side of Purdy Lane in this area is zoned R36, with the exception of one, well, two parcels that are zoned business. That zoning dates back several years. To the north, our property is zoned RU4. Some aerial imagery. This is the view of the property viewing to the south. And this one is viewing to the southeast. The applicant has submitted a site plan demonstrating an intent to develop the property for residential use, again, utilizing the county's opt-out program. Section 2.63 of the zoning regulations identifies 15 factors used to evaluate rezoning requests. For this downzone, nine factors apply. Factors in favor of this application: the applicant complies with the applicable factors; the request is compatible with the low-density residential growth pattern of the area; the downzone would reduce the number of allowed principal dwellings; and staff has not received any opposition from nearby property owners, and has not identified any factors not in Staff completed the public notification process between 15 and 20 November, publishing a legal ad, mailing notification letters, as well as posting the property. Madam Chair and Commissioners, that concludes staff's presentation of docket RZ 24-23. We are available for your questions, and the applicant is present.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson? This is time for your statement. You have 10 minutes, please.
No statement, ma'am. Thank you. Appreciate your consideration.
Your name and full address, please.
Patrick Wilson, 74 Theman Drive, Bisfield, on 85603.
Go ahead, sir.
I have nothing.
I can't hear you.
I have nothing to say, ma'am. Question is rezoning. That's it.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your consideration. That's it.
All right then. Thank you so much. This is the time for other people to speak for or against. Mr. Wallace, is this the time you would like to speak?
Yes, it sure is. Good afternoon, Cochise County Planning Commission. Thank you so much for what you're doing for our community. I'd actually like to address an issue that's pretty critical and important, and that's the protection of private property rights in our country, in our counties, planning and zoning processes. Let's just take this one, for instance. Private property ownership, as you know, is a fundamental aspect of our liberty and, of course, economic stability. Of course, not just being a legal right, but a cornerstone of the American way of life. To this end, I actually propose that you consider adopting a resolution titled Resolution to Protect Citizens' Property Rights. This resolution enshrines the principles that planning decisions must respect and prioritize private property ownership. Specifically, it affirms the following commitments. So this not only goes for this one, but also the next docket number as well. So first, it requires that any planning or zoning proposals that could negatively impact a property owner's rights or property value bring that owner directly into discussions and deliberations before any decisions are made. Transparency and involvement are key to fairness. Second, should a proposal proceed despite its impact, the resolution stipulates that the property owner must be compensated for any fair market losses. This ensures that individuals are not unfairly burdened by policies enacted for the broader community. And then last, the resolution mandates that no government officials, planners, or stakeholders may enter private property or planning purposes without the express written permission of the owner. This basic respect for personal boundaries reinforces the trust between citizens and their government. And so these provisions serve to balance the public interest with individual rights, ensuring that we protect what makes our community strong while respecting personal ownership and liberty. So I just urge you to maybe take this resolution, which I've actually emailed all three members of the county board of supervisors, this resolution. And so we need their buy-in as well. But take the resolution under serious consideration, and I'd be happy to discuss it further or provide additional context as needed. So by adopting this resolution, we reaffirm our commitment to the citizens we serve, ensuring their rights are respected and their trust is upheld. And so I'm sure that there is at least a little bit of language that reassures us of the rights of the citizens, the private property rights. But I do want to see the language, first of all, and also would love for you to get on board with the resolution. Thank you for your time and thoughtful consideration of this important matter. And if you have any questions, and I know maybe this is something that's new, or maybe not. I'm done.
Thank you, sir. The public hearing portion of this matter is closed. This is time for commission discussion. Are there any questions for the applicant or staff? Hearing none. Mr. Taylor, your summary and recommendation, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, based on the factors in favor of approval, staff recommends forwarding docket RZ 24-23 to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval without special conditions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I'd like to call for the motion, please.
Madam Chair, I move to recommend approval of docket RZ 24-23 to the Board of Supervisors without special conditions. Rezoning takes parcel 102-53-017 from R36 to RU4. The factors in favor of approval constitute the findings of fact.
You second?
Second.
Mr. Montgomery? Thank you. Is there any further discussion of this motion? I call for the question, please. Mr. Limbach, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Montgomery?
I vote aye.
Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Vicket?
Aye.
Mr. Martzki?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. It is unanimous. Mr. Wilson, this matter will be sent to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval. Any person not agreeing with this action should attend the Board of Supervisors' meeting dealing with this docket. The next item this evening is docket SU 24-20, Cochise Stronghold Guest Lodging. The applicant is Kathy Hunter Gregory. Are you present? Thank you very much. Mr. Taylor, your report, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This is the staff presentation for docket RSU 24-20. This is a special use authorization request for guest lodging. The applicant is Kathleen Hunter Gregory. The property is located at 1155 South Cochise Stronghold Road. That would be parcel 11909004, and that parcel totals approximately 40 acres. The property is zoned RU4. The plan designates the property for rural use, and the growth area is Growth Area D, which would be rural areas. There is an established single-family residence on the property, and the applicant proposes to continue residential use and include a guest lodging component. Property is located approximately four miles west of Highway 191, which would be west of Sun Site's Unit 1. Sun Sites, again, Sun Sites lots to the east. Those lots average approximately one acre. Multiple rural-zoned properties average ranging from four to 40 acres or west of the subject property between Cochise Stronghold and the Dragon Mountains. The applicant has supplied a site plan. Want to make one point of clarification. This graphic does identify what was at the time an intended minor land division application. I did approve that application last week, so this parcel no longer, at least for us, it hasn't been recorded yet, it hasn't been executed by the assessor's office, but we have approved a minor land division application, subdividing the property into four or four-acre lots with the remaining 22-acre tract to be considered for the guest lodging use. So the project site would be 22 acres. The applicant proposes up to five guest lodging units. Three of those would be elevated platforms with either some sort of a cabin or possibly tent. And there are a couple of recreational vehicle spaces that the previous owner had improved on the property, done prior to the applicant's acquiring of the property. And the applicant would like to legitimize those spaces for potential future use, possibly with cabins or possibly with RVs, to be utilized either by family members or by guests. So, again, the request is for up to five guest lodging units. The applicant has also provided a rendering showing what those elevated platforms would look like, and this would be one of the more site-built or prefabricated structures that would be on that platform. Let's have some aerial imagery here. This first one is viewing Cochise Stronghold in the foreground. This would be viewing towards the mountains, viewing west. This next view would be viewing southwest, showing the property's location at the corner of Cochise Stronghold and Dreamcatcher Way. And this final image would be viewing to the northwest. Section 2.48 of the zoning regulations identifies 10 factors to evaluate special use requests. In this particular case, eight of those factors apply, and staff finds that those eight factors do comply with conditions. To summarize, factors in favor of approval: the request does comply with the applicable factors, as stated. Factors not in favor: staff has received opposition from nearby property owners, both inside and outside the notification area. The applicant mailed letters to property owners within 900 feet on 21 October, did not receive any opposition. Staff executed the public notification process between 14 and 20 November, mailing notices, posting the property, and publishing a legal ad. This first graphic is an approximation of the notification area. Staff mailed 35 notices to property owners within 900 feet, receiving seven responses in opposition, two in favor, and staff has received an additional 11 responses outside the notification area in opposition, which are represented on the next slide. So again, as a reference point, I believe it's, I can't remember the name of the road slope, that's approximately one mile west of the property. Madam Chair and Commissioners, this concludes staff's presentation of docket SU 24-20, special use requests for up to five guest lodging units. We are available for your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. This is the time for the applicant's statement. Ms. Gregory, you have 10 minutes. You state your name and address before you begin.
Kathleen Hunter Gregory. My name is Kathleen Hunter Gregory. I live at 3376 North Camino La Higueria, Tucson, Arizona, 85712.
Thank you.
Can I start? Yes. My name is Kathy Hunter Gregory. I currently live in Tucson, Arizona, but I have a second home in the Cochise Stronghold. I fell in love with this area of Cochise County because of the wide-open space, the beautiful and rugged mountains, the peaceful and cool canyons, the wildlife and birds, and the deep and interesting history. I have always been an outdoorsy person and love hiking, nature, and geology. Over the years, my family and I have talked about purchasing a property away from the city in a rural setting where some of us would live and use as a family residence and gathering space for our children and grandchildren. We purchased the 40-acre property at 1155 Cochise Stronghold Road because we felt we found what we were looking for. My son, Cole, a viticulture student, said he liked the property, not only because it was close to the Wilcox Vineyards and Wineries, but because of its cozy bungalow home, mesquite desert, and shady wash that crosses the property. My brother, Jim, said he wanted to build his retirement home here as well. The rest of my family also expressed interest in bringing their own families here from time to time to enjoy the area and spend time together. The idea of using some of the property as a small glamping site came up as a means to create some rental income and share the space with others, who also appreciate the outdoors, the night sky, the nearby hiking and climbing opportunities, and the countless other attractions, including wineries, ghost towns, indigenous culture, and archaeology in American history. To accomplish the goal of creating a multi-use property of family residence while generating positive cash flow, the property was divided into five parcels: four four-acre parcels for personal family residence, and one 22-acre parcel for common family use and part-time guests. The special use application that is up for consideration is for the 22-acre site. For Phase 1, we are proposing building up to three cabins or safari-style tents on elevated platforms. Each glamping unit will have an enclosed sleeping area of about 250 square feet, an outdoor seating area, an outdoor shower, and compost or incinerator toilet. There will be some power for lights and charging electronics, a freshwater storage tank, a propane-heated hot shower, two parking spaces, and comfortable bedding. Heating and cooling options are subject to budget. The plan is to also have a park-like area with a ramada, a children's play area, a fenced dog run, and an elevated platform for night-sky viewing and astronomy enthusiasts. Phase 2 will be contingent on budget and overall interest in the Phase 1 glamping site, and includes a common-use building of approximately 1,200 square feet with an indoor and outdoor kitchen, an indoor seating area, outdoor fire pit, toilets, and a laundry facility. The Phase 2 addition would allow for added amenities, including coffee, breakfast options, or evening cookouts for guests and family. There is an existing network of trails crisscrossing the property, which guests and residents can use for walking, birding, and biking. There will be no ATV use except by family residents and employees. The only entrance to the property is on Cochise Stronghold Road. Because of the limited number of camping sites, the expected impact on local traffic is minimal. The expected impact on noise pollution is also expected to be small, with quiet hours from 10:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. We will require renters to sign an agreement regarding behavior, noise, and pets. I hope this explanation of our proposed guest lodging use alleviates any concerns by our neighbors or the commission. We fully intend to preserve the rural residential character of the area and respectfully request the commission's approval for our special use application. I also have a PowerPoint presentation that I'd like to show, if Matthew can show that. First is, the first slide, please. The concept. What is glamping? Glamping is luxury camping, a growing segment of the travel industry that attracts visitors interested in nature and outdoor activities. What is the concept? To create a small family business for positive cash flow on a family-owned property by renting up to three glamping sites and two RV campsites on a 22-acre parcel in an RU4-zoned residential neighborhood. Who are the glamping guests? The targeted demographic are visitors to Cochise County that would like an alternative experience to a motel stay or traditional camp or traditional tent camping. These could be seasonal visitors interested in birding, local history, or those seeking a nature retreat from the city. Who lives on the property? Who are the residents? The surrounding parcels are family-owned. One parcel is currently owner-occupied, and the others will be owner-occupied. Next slide is the site plan. You can see the four parcels to be occupied by family members. The one is already occupied by my son. My brother will be living in the one in the corner. You can see from these parcels that they provide a partial buffer between any glamping activities or family use and neighbors. Next slide. Impact analysis. The land use does comply with the Cochise County's Rural Area Plan Designation. Rural districts allow for non-residential activities and guest lodging with approval. And the traffic impact on Cochise Stronghold Road is small, with up to five seasonal guest lodging facilities. There is no ingress or egress from Dreamcatcher Way at all, or will be allowed. The next slide is a elevation sketch of what the elevated cabin may look like. You can see it's elevated. There's an indoor, there's a sleeping area that will be enclosed. There's a screened-in, like, dining area, outdoor seating, and you can see the toilet and shower up on the platform. Next slide, please. Neighbor concerns. To address some of my neighbors' concerns, they seem to be primarily related to noise, lighting, sanitation, traffic, and commercialization. Regarding noise, our guests will sign an acknowledgement of quiet hours between 10:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m. We will use low-impact lighting to preserve dark skies. The area will be kept clean from litter and odors. As far as traffic, there is no access from Dreamcatcher Way. And I want to emphasize, this is not an RV park or a public campground. It's family-owned and occupied, and is not open to the public unless two registered guests. Lastly, on the last slide, the reasons I believe this project should be approved is it is a sustainable green space, it is improving the property. Glamping guests are typically those interested in a quiet and natural experience. They're not partiers, they're not ATV riders. The project promotes area attractions and interest. I have followed the county codes and procedures, followed all the rules. I have actually retained, I have included an architectural team to help deliver a quality product. And lastly, I'm a local resident and a neighbor. With that, I have no other, nothing else to say for my statement. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now declare the public hearing open. This is the time for comments from other persons. Five minutes is allotted. If you feel, though, that you're beginning to repeat one another, we can condense that time. First is Lisa Thornbright. I'll let you say your name properly with your address before you speak.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Thornburg. The address is 1597 West San Xavier Trail, Cochise, Arizona, 85606. We're writing to make our voices, hopefully, one of many, to oppose this special use permit to make these 40 acres into a proposed glamping up to six guest lodging with tents, RVs, and cabins. Up until today, we have not seen any plans for any structures, and this proposal, the way we saw it, was way too vague and lacks exactly what is to be expected. Will any of these structures be permanent? If so, where will they be built? What are their dimensions? Will there be a septic system? Will there be a well? What is the estimate of water usage per day, per month, and per year? What is the proposal for waste disposal? What will be the limited size of RVs permitted to occupy any campsite? Will there be horses and/or other pack animals involved? We now know where the entrance will be, but up until today, we did not know where the entrance was going to be. Who will oversee the property? And where will they live? And will they live in the property year-round? Having this proposal will significantly increase our traffic, and Cochise County does not currently maintain Dreamcatcher Way. currently maintain Dreamcatcher Way. In addition to this, there are currently no commercial businesses here except agriculture. Most of the homes built here are custom and are upscale on lots of anywhere from 10 to 40 acres. Most of the owners are retired and have saved a lifetime to have some peace and quiet in their golden years in this beautiful and quiet community near the Cochise Stronghold. We do not want our property devalued because of this development. As members of this residential community, we strongly oppose having this kind of business and deserve to know so much more about what these 40 acres are intended. In addition, there are only two places to access the state land to the west, either Dreamcatcher Way or our easement road, which is San Xavier Trail. And this is, the easement is to the immediate south of our home. Both of these are dirt roads, and in both cases, the wear and tear of incoming traffic will impact the maintenance. As for horses, if they are out-of-state horses that will be residing there, who's going to pick up the manure on the easement road or on Dreamcatcher? Who will ensure that out-of-state horses are properly vaccinated? We don't want transients in our neighborhood. We've worked our entire lives to make this our retirement home in the peace and quiet of Cochise Stronghold. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is George Thornburg. Who is Richard? Come forward, sir. Would you state your last name and your address before you speak? You have five minutes.
Last name, can you hear me? Ivanowski, address 1159 North Wild Eagle Place, Cochise, Arizona. I am a resident, as are the people here, in opposition to this. All residents of the Dreamcatcher neighborhood. I've passed out a form for each of the supervisors to see that we have 40 homes on this area on Dreamcatcher. There's one way in and one way out. Quiet, beautiful, and sparsely populated is exactly the neighborhoods that each of us occupants and owners have chosen for our homes. And in most cases, it's our last home. We're mostly beyond retirement age significantly, and we find this to be the peace that we would like to have for the remainder of our time living here. I've read over and over again the information that has been submitted through Matthew Taylor's website, which shows that what was necessary to fill out paper septic work and the like, and have stayed up to date with it. And news presented today was never previously available to see. It comes and is introduced to us today as they are local residents. This, we don't understand. We don't see anyone named Kathy Turner as a resident here. Her proposal that it's going to be family-occupied is completely news to us. And I find that everything needed to defeat this application has been posted on the Cochise websites. It states that you, as the supervisors here, are responsible to preserve the character of these designated areas as rural. The purchase of real estate property, CRE, commercial real estate property, in order to create an income for her trust and to divide a property that's scheduled as RU4, which commits us to having a dwelling for 4 acres. To me, a dwelling is a place in which you live. A lodging is adverse to that. To have people come and go as if this were a hotel, again, doesn't fit into an environment that relates to the safeguarding, the health and safety of we and our welfare in the Dreamcatcher I find it's not competitive to have this operation and this money-making operation put in our neighborhood. I found also a disclosure, discovery that this Taylor, Kathy Taylor Gregory, had on October 29th created an LLC in the state of Arizona called, named Hideaway Properties. And Hideaway Properties, as she suggested to you earlier in her conversation, is about making money. Rural properties allow at some point that supervisors did allow something like this, but we find that it's completely against the harmony and the nature, and it's out of scale with our homes that we again enjoy quiet, beautiful, and sparsely populated. This is an investment that she's making to gain profit for her future family. And it's completely news to us that this is going to be owner-occupied. As a matter of fact, the designation of the 40 acres being cut into four individual properties leaving 22 acres, that chart and scale was never presented, was never available for us, the, those of us who oppose this, to take a look at. So briefly, I'm close to wearing out of time, and I'd like to tell you that when I compared the notes that were available at that time to three pages of the requirements for what has to be presented in Maricopa County, I find on my own note that I sent to Mr. Taylor, Thank you for listening. And again, there are more people that will have opposition to this. And I'm always ready to speak again if you let me.
Thank you. George Thornburg, are you ready to speak now? I'll put you at the end of the, end of the stack. Name and address before you speak. You have five minutes.
Ron Pepe, 833 North Slope Alongway, Cochise, 85606. Not a very good speaker, so I'm just going to get right to the point. You know, the fact that this needs a special permit should in itself manifest itself that it does not belong here, okay? It's not zoned for it, and that's why it needs a special permit, okay? It doesn't belong here, okay? We, as the owners who live there, you know, we don't need the noise, the traffic, the crime. We don't need it, and we don't want it, okay? I mean, the county doesn't even maintain Dreamcatcher. You know, we do at our expense, okay? Having visitors come here all the time, you know, it's just going to tear up the road, and we're going to be stuck with the expense again, okay? They'll, you know, they'll come in, they'll tear up the road, and they'll leave us to manage, you know, it. So at the end of the day, you know, you all who are going to approve this, you know, you don't live there, we do, okay? We got to put up with this stuff, okay? So, you know, I'm just venting here, so, you know, bear with me here. So, you know, and I've actually sent a letter to our rep, Juan Sisgamani, to look into this, okay? We didn't spend our fortunes, our lives, or anything to have something like this come in. We don't need it. We didn't ask for it, and we don't want it, okay? So that's just it. And I trust there's probably no ambiguity to what I'm saying here. You know, we oppose this. So forgive me, it's my upbringing. There you have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Crosby, 1150 North Slope Alongway, 85606. I have a few questions about this. One, I hear not much about a septic system. Is it going to be a single-septic system, a multi-septic system? And we've only lived here a couple of years. In fact, we're building our home as I speak. And we moved here, we chose this place because it was very quiet, nice place to be, beautiful views, and we want to keep it that way. I don't know. She says no one's going to go on Dreamcatcher Way. Well, who's going to police that? Who's going to say? I'm not going to listen to her. I'm going to go where I want. We're the people, we the people maintain our road, not the county. And I'm opposed to this. And it seems very sketchy to me. There's not a lot of infrastructure put forth. I mean, she showed you a little building there, but there's going to be tents and RVs, transients, people we don't know. They may be fine people, but they may not be. So I'm opposed to this, and I want to make my statement. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Tara Crosby. I'm Ron's wife. I live at 1150...
Speak into the microphone.
I live at 1150 North Slope Alongway. Can you hear me better?
Yes.
Cochise, 85606. You know, at the risk of sounding very redundant and echoing what my friends and neighbors have all said, and also speaking from my heart, and I kind of am the type of person, I put the cards out on the table, I don't mince words very well. Like my husband said, we are in the last final stages of building our dream home, our last resting place. It's taken a lot. It's taken a big toll on us, and we put a lot into it, and it's arduous. We really feel a sort of neighborhood there. I need you to understand that we're not talking about just a bunch of people living out on so many acres. We are neighbors. We are a rural neighborhood. We know whose dog is where. We know who's this or that. We know whose gate is open, if the lights are on and they shouldn't be, or whatever. But we are a cohesive neighborhood, and we would like to stay that way. We would like to continue to know who's walking up and down our street. Is there a problem? Should we call the widow lady on the, on the corner and let her know that there's a stranger? Do you know what I'm saying? And until this hits home where you live, it's not that we're trying to be unkind to Kathy or her family, but I really don't see the need. If it's just a family little compound, they do have their other campsites, family sites set aside, why do they need to turn the 22 acres into a moneymaker? We have to deal with the trash. We have to deal with the road issues. Again, there's nobody except George Thornburg that maintains the Dreamcatcher Road, and George is, you know, up in his ears. You can look and see that. We are knit together. I hope that somehow I'm hitting home with all of you that you understand we are knit together. We're not trying to be mean to anyone, but we just, we have our dreams, and a lot of us have sacrificed a lot for those dreams. And we want to keep our way of life what we signed up for. We don't want to come and impose our will on anybody else, but nor do we want someone else to come and impose their will on us. And like the people have echoed before me, there's not going to be a policing system that's going to come up and down Dreamcatcher and go, well, who's RTV, are you? ATV. There's not going to be anybody. Whose dog is that? Oh, why are you walking around? We can't say all that because people have the right to do these things, but let's not invite a situation that we can't control or that we can't monitor. If this were happening in your backyard, I think you might share some of our concerns and some of our hopes that you will look at us as your neighbors, as your family, and you might understand our predicament. So I, with that, I'll leave you and say thank you very much, and God bless.
Thank you.
My name is Doris Fisher, and English is not my first language, so excuse myself. I live at 1159 North White Eagle Place in Cochise, 85606. And I'm not speaking for myself right here because everything was already said I wanted to say, but I have a letter here from Bob Weston, who is my direct neighbor, and he has a medical treatment today, so he couldn't be here by himself, if that's okay.
Madam Chair, in the interest of time.
Pardon?
Excuse me, ma'am. I just want to let you know that we do have a Bob Weston that's called in.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Evening. My name is Lynn Rawls. I live at 833 North Slope Alongway, Cochise, Arizona 85606. I've lived there 14 years, left Tucson to be out in this beautiful Cochise County.
Speak in the microphone, ma'am. Yes, thanks.
So I, I do have to say, in that 14 years, we have been a very tight community. We actually have a Cochise Neighborhood List that everybody gets access to whatever information is shared by the other neighbors, so at any given moment, we can contact, be in communication with each other. That's from me, but I'm also here to represent Matthew Taylor, if that's okay. I'm going to read what Matthew Taylor has written. Would that be acceptable?
Is that the proper name?
I have Matthew Taylor, and he lives, he doesn't have his address on here, but it is a name.
Marshall.
Oh, it's Marshall. Oh, sorry, George, sorry about that. George and Tabitha Marshall, 1130 West Dreamcatcher Way. That didn't make any sense. Okay, Matthew Taylor, got it. I got it. Is that okay if I go ahead and read this?
Yes, ma'am, within the allotted time.
Okay. So what was written by Tabitha and George is that regarding this request to mar and negatively impact our homes and desecrate a historic and beautiful region of Cochise County, that's what he's addressing this to. I find it ironic that this area is acknowledged and promoted by Cochise County as one of the gems of the county, only to have the county consider placing an RV park similar to those seen along Interstate 10 in Tucson and Yuma. Now, he was incorrect on that, obviously, based on what we've heard tonight. It matters not, although two RVs, I guess, and then structures built. It matters not that this applicant is proposing upscale glamping yurts for this site. Your proposed permit allows tents, RVs, et cetera, that more closely matches that of a KOA park. It's very doubtful that glamping yurts will be successful here, leading the permit holder to fall back on your allowance of tents and RVs. This RV park will attract a range of transients from snowbirds to squatters. The area it is located leaves these transients only... The area it is located leaves these transients only one area to wander around on, Dreamcatcher Way, right into our homes and properties. They will wander down our street with their dogs and ATVs, spreading garbage and droppings, disrupting our peace and quiet, threatening our safety and security. You cannot control who stays at this park. We are the ones that are vulnerable to that ilk. It is fortunate that we have the federal government to recognize and protect areas in this county, such as the Cochise Stronghold, which, by the way, is the name of the road that this proposed park will be situated on. They also recognize that this was the home of the Chiracalla Apache, and we take pride in preserving the beauty of this mountain range with our well-maintained residences. We don't need out-of-town individuals that only seek to make a buck from this area without regard to the residents, beauty, and history of our homes. I get the sense that the denizens of the misguided Development Services Department have not even so much as left their cubicles to view the region being discussed. Thankfully, we have the federal government to protect us as opposed to the county that is supposed to. But then again, the reputation of Cochise County precedes itself. Not only is this a blight and cannot be undone, it's an action that sets a precedent for further desecration. And I thank you all for listening to all of us on this matter.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm George C. Thornburg. I live at 1597 West San Xavier Trail, Cochise, Arizona 85606. I moved over here, over 20 years ago, I moved into where I am now. And my understanding is when I bought my parcel, I could only make five splits. And I think that's a state or a county requirement, is that correct, for open land?
Go ahead, sir.
Okay. From what I'm seeing here is, they're gonna take four plots for themselves, then there's gonna be a 22-acre plot that they want to put a business on. Now, it's my understanding that you can't put that many units on 22 acres, from what I've heard here today, with four buildings and two RV lots and all the rest of that stuff. Okay, now, excuse me. And my understanding is four-acre zoning are four, is that correct? Now, on San Xavier Trail, easement stops at our southwest boundary, because to our northwest boundary is state land, to our southwest boundary is owned by some other vigil, individuals, and the easement does not extend beyond that point. So using San Xavier Trail to go up to the state land or federal land is impossible. I think the same applies to Dreamcatcher, that there is no way to get on the state land or federal land from Dreamcatcher. I have another question, is that a flood zone? I don't know. We know that when it rains, that part of Dreamcatcher to the south of us gets pretty wet. Also, Highway 191 is a much better site to put this kind of facility, because I think the zoning is more permissible for that. I have to agree with everything else that everybody has said here today, and I thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Wallace on Teams, did you want to comment on this item?
Yes, I sure do. I just want to, I'm just amazed at the intelligence that has gone forth and how that there was opposition, and it does circle back to the wisdom of having the citizens' private property rights innate within the planning and zoning requirements within that process. And I mean, because the first item on there of the resolution would be, it requires that any planning or zoning proposals that could negatively impact, right? And we heard a lot of negative impacts here. That could negatively impact a property owner's rights or property value, bring that owner directly into discussions and deliberations before any decisions are made. And so I'm just thankful for the wisdom that is innate within some of those planning and zoning documents. This won't be the last time that you hear this. You may have, you most likely will have more people bringing this up until something is said about it, commented about it, and not ignored. And so we just want to thank for people that stand up and that say, "Hey, you know, I would like for you not to do this." And I also want to thank you for giving me the platform to speak on this as well. But you're seeing right now why it is very important to include the owners, the residents, in some of these decisions that are made. Somebody made the comment of special use, and how it had to have a special use, is that even constitutional? Is that, I mean, just because something is in a law, you know, we're in a time and date where people are making unlawful laws and they're putting it into law. So really, it's mischief into law. But we are thankful that something can be done about this and will be done about it. So I do want to thank you, and I'll give the time back.
Thank you, sir. Do we have anyone else online?
I'm actually on a call.
Who is this, please?
My name is Denise Binog, and I am a property owner. I live at 820 West Ironwood Road. I'm located approximately a mile south of this proposed Cochise Stronghold Road property. I have got a concern about two things that I have not heard mentioned at all tonight. First off, in Mrs. Gregory's presentation, I noticed that nothing was touched upon about the impact to the wildlife for going and developing this raw property in such a manner. And the other issue, when she was talking about future plans and possibly putting a laundromat out there for guests to use, nothing was brought up about the water usage. Water's a finite resource out here, and there are many people who are already having their wells run dry and running out of water. This area does not need this extra strain on water resources out here. There's already the large pistachio farm right next to this property. And so I am against this proposal. I can appreciate her position, but for wherever Mrs. Gregory lives, I don't think she would appreciate people like us coming into Tucson and building in her neighborhood and putting a business right next door to her. So that's all of my input on it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Do we have anyone else?
We do, Madam Chair. Mr. Weston, are you still with us?
I'm actually on a call. Can you hear me? Hello?
Who's speaking, please?
Amy Quinn. I just wanted to ensure that my online submission in opposition was received.
Mr. Taylor, do you have a copy of that?
Yes, Madam Chair. Amy Quinn did submit written opposition to this docket, and that was, I believe, available with the agenda.
Okay, super. That's all I wanted. I've never attended one of these before, never had the need, and I concur with all the previous speakers. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And this commission does read what is submitted to us with our agendas. Anyone else?
I work online, but I don't always trust it. Thank you.
Understood. Who else was it, Mr. Taylor?
Mr. Weston, are you still with us? All right. We also have a speaker, Madam Chair, Kay Harris.
Kay Harris, do you want to speak?
Yes, I do, just briefly. Can you hear me?
Yes. State your full name and address, please.
Kay Harris, 1546 West Dreamcatcher Way, Cochise, Arizona 85606. I had not seen any of these plans before today. It was all very vague to me of what was proposed, and I am concerned about a commercial enterprise at the corner of Dreamcatcher and Cochise Stronghold. And while the plans that were presented today said that there is no access to Dreamcatcher, that doesn't mean there is no traffic on Dreamcatcher. And if there is traffic going up Dreamcatcher, which is a dirt road, unimproved, not county-maintained, only maintained by my neighbors, additional traffic is gonna be a problem. And there is no, as others have said, there is no way to police additional traffic on Dreamcatcher. The fact that there's no access from that property is kind of meaningless, because all you have to do is go around the corner, and you're on Dreamcatcher. I don't know if horses are intended, or horse trailers, or large diesel trucks pulling horse trailers. All of this would be very detrimental to Dreamcatcher. So I am opposed to this proposition. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else online that would like to comment on this docket?
Hearing none. I close the public comment portion. This is the time for the applicant's statement. Would you like to answer any of the items that have been brought up? You have five minutes.
First off, I would like to just answer some of the direct questions that some of the neighbors had, as far as some of the questions, first off, about the horses. No, we weren't planning to have any horses on the property. I'm not a horse owner. There's no corral, well, there's a broken-down old corral on the property, but there's no plan to have horses on the property. As far as, there was questions about water in a well. There's already an existing well on the property, has been for a while. We have two septic systems on the property already there. One is on one of the parcels close to the house, and the other one is in the central part of the 22 acres. There was a question about if there was anybody going to be on the property. Yes. My son and his girlfriend, right here, live on the property full-time. That's their home. And they would be on the property full-time, anytime there would be any paying guests on the property. I wanted to make a comment about the concern that this is a commercial venture, big money-making way for me to create, you know, a business. I simply wanted to ask permission to rent some renting, some camping units on the property. I believe that it is permitted under the Cochise County Planning and Zoning with permission, which is why we are here. I don't see how it's a whole lot different than other property owners renting Airbnb or their guest houses and so on. It just happens to be three of them instead of one. But it is an overall, a 40-acre site. I think the impact is going to be minimal to the overall impact for traffic. I think that seems to be one of the main concerns. Again, it's only if somebody comes and rents it. I think this is just a seasonal visitation. There's not a whole lot of people that want to come out and live in the boonies, or stay in the boonies for a weekend and drive around. So I really don't see lots of people coming through and disturbing either Dreamcatcher or Cochise County or Cochise Stronghold Road. See if there's any other questions. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Public hearing is now closed. This is the time for commission discussion. We have questions of the applicant or staff. Mr. Saunders?
You're gonna just use the existing two RV sites? Or are you building new ones? You're using the two existing?
I'm sorry?
You have two existing RV sites on the property.
That's correct.
Those are the two that you're using. You're not building new ones?
No, I'm not building new ones. They were already there, and my plan wasn't to even really rent them, but we were just, what was the term that you used to validate them? I think, according to the county, the previous owner had put them in.
They're existing.
They were pre-existing, yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Mardsky?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Montgomery?
I have a few. Concerning the RV sites, thank you. Are they actually, are they hookups of some kind, or is it just a parking spot? What are the RV sites like?
The two RV sites on the property currently have water, power, and septic hookup.
So they're ready to go?
Yes.
Okay. And you weren't thinking of adding any, or?
No.
Okay. You have, in the presentation, the sketch, I guess, of one of the, is that an accurate portrayal of the dwelling, or that one?
That is the initial sketch, based on my meetings with my architect and my landscape architect in Tucson. That sketch right there. If the, it's gonna be steel and wood, is the initial plan. We haven't actually gotten or received quotes on the building. If it comes in too costly, we are gonna put a safari-style tent on the platform, along with the bathroom.
Okay. And you were anticipating up to five of those?
No, three.
Three?
Three. The five included the two RV sites that were already on the property.
Okay. And then regarding tents, can you describe what that would look like, or what kind of a tent are we talking about?
You can picture a safari-style tent. They're used, I would say, the size of the tent is, that we have been looking at, there's big ones, small ones, of course, but maybe 20 feet by 15 feet. Actually, my brother knows a little bit more about that. It's made from a heavy canvas material. There's usually two layers. Think of a big army tent type of thing.
Would you say it's a durable tent that could stay up all year?
Yes.
Or for years?
Yes, they make them so they, I think they expected to last probably five to 10 years before they would have to be replaced.
And that might be in your plans?
Yes. In lieu of the site built. The platform would be built, but instead of the casita on there, it would be the tent.
Let's see. Did you have a proposed stay limit, a time limit, for visitors?
I hadn't really made a final decision on that. My preference is that the minimum stay would be seven days, because I don't just want one person coming in overnight, two nights. It would be somebody who would stay probably seven days. I did not anticipate that somebody would stay much longer than that, given the size of the unit.
I can imagine similar proposals that we've had in the past that has been a concern. And- And the worry being that somebody would just kind of move in and stay week by week forever. Have you considered that?
That's not our intention at all. As I mentioned earlier in my introduction, initially, this was supposed to be a family campground and/or a family gathering space. I have a large family. We all love outdoor activities and so on. And we thought, well, we need a place for, you know, my family to come and visit and kids to run around and so on. And my thought was, well, because I'm an accountant of the CPA, I'm a businessperson. I'm like, well, maybe when it's not being used, we could rent them for some positive cash flow. This did not start off as an idea to make money. It was while they're vacant and the family's not using them, I wanted to have the county's permission to be able to rent them.
Well, not to get into that too personally, I also have a large family and same concerns. And that was your initial idea, right, for family?
Yes, it was a family compound.
Kids, grandkids, all of that.
Family, have everyone be able to gather, come down from Tucson and Phoenix and a place where everybody can be together and, you know, kids can hang out for the weekend and.
So that certainly would not be any kind of a commercial enterprise. That would be your family business and it would be private.
Yes, I just wanted to have permission to rent it when it's not being used.
That I see. Your family business, which everybody's entitled to, and a commercial business. Those are different.
That's correct, yes.
See if I can get to the end of this. The road maintenance, have you discussed that with the neighbors?
No, I have not discussed it with the neighbors. This is the first time I've even met some of, or I haven't even met them yet, but hope to some point. But no, I haven't talked about the road maintenance. Certainly, we live there too and would be more than happy to help with keeping the area clean because that's to our advantage as well.
Okay. I think my last question then, or maybe it's a statement. I appreciate your interest and efforts to want to do a thing like that. We all do, I think, at some point. We have, in my experience, a rather large opposition to this tonight. Usually don't get that much. And I'm seeing that it has been articulate and well-informed opposition. And as with other cases we've had here, perhaps some discussion between you all might resolve some of these concerns. It doesn't seem there's been much of that happening. But if you could, it might help.
A discussion between me and the neighbors?
With your neighbors about.
I would be glad to, yes. I think it appears to me that a lot of the neighbors just didn't have all the information. There was no way for me to communicate that. We're just going through the process of the special use application. So I'm sorry that they did not have an opportunity to see the site plan. In fact, I would even invite any of my neighbors if they wanted to come walk through the property. They're welcome to. We can be glad to do that.
Generally, as somebody who offered a resolution before this meeting or during the beginning, we are generally in favor of property rights in this country and endorse that a lot. But there is a boundary for all of those. And one of our mandates at this commission is to protect others who have their own rights and property. So in this project, it seems interesting to me, and I would wish you well on it, but I think there are so many blanks or unanswered things about details that I'm a little bit troubled by some of it. So with that, I think I will stop my commentary and questions. So give you all a break now.
Thank you. Ms. Vickett, anything?
No, except I believe there are some Airbnbs and some bedded breakfasts in that same area.
I believe there are.
Already, so. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins.
A few questions. Who also wants two acres? I actually, you've split the property up into five parcels.
I do.
Okay, you do. At some point, you could sell that to somebody and they could come in and divide it into five more parcels.
I think so, as long as the minimum size is four acres, I guess so. Yeah.
So there is the potential of five more sites on this parcel. That aside, the three parcels that favor Dreamcatcher Way, will they use Dreamcatcher to get to those parcels?
No, well, there is an old driveway on one corner, but it's locked up and we've never used it since I purchased the property a year and a half ago.
But they could. They could act.
No, because they'd have to drive through private property to do it. And that has not the. I don't know.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Watkins, Dreamcatcher is a private road.
And you touched on it. It seems like there's a big lack of communication between applicant and the neighbors. And I understand the process. The neighbors come here and they find out about some. Today is the first time they've heard about it. Well, there's no real way to disseminate that information to them. So it sounds like a lot of dialogue is needed between you all to let you become a part of the community, even if you kept this as a family gathering spot.
Nathan, if you could speak into the microphone, please.
Okay. Let me start over. I'm just saying that I know how it is to move into an area and want to do something and then all the neighbors are up in arms about it. And I think there just needs to be a lot of dialogue between everybody. I'm not saying for the project or I'm opposed to it at this point. That's all I've got to say.
May I ask a question? If I, if I didn't rent any of the units and wanted to just build three glamping or three platformed buildings on the property, is that a problem, as long as I don't rent them? For family use?
Yeah, you have the zoning to build these units. You have 22 acres, are you for zoning? You're allowed one home per four acres.
So not a problem?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Limbach, let's ask Mr. Young, does he have anything before we go forward?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. And I was just answered, one of them was answered. So I found out that Dreamcatcher is a private road then, so there is no legal easement there. Ma'am, you stated you live on this property at this time?
I don't live on the property at this time, but my son does.
And your son hasn't had opportunity to talk to the neighbors about this project or?
I'm sorry, say that again?
Has your son spoken or gotten to know his neighbors to find, to kind of let him know what's going on?
I. Let me, I'll let him speak.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Cole. I live there. Yeah, I'd like to meet more of the neighbors. We've lived there for almost a year and a half now. But no, I'm not sure that I was gonna go and knock on doors about it. But yeah, I mean, I'd love to talk to more of the neighbors and.
Thank you.
Is that it, Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Limbach, did you have questions or did you want to present your amendments?
Questions first.
Okay, go.
So the first thing I noticed in my, in this packet of information is that the activities you outlined in your letter to the, your neighbors, i.e. hiking, bird watching, was quite a bit different from what you actually proposed in the application, i.e. ATV rides, astronomy guides, wine tasting, other activities. So my first question is why the huge disparity with the activities between what you told your neighbors you were gonna do and what you're proposing to the county?
Those were just ideas that we had thrown out for possible activities that would, might be of interest on the property for us. Some of my family members are avid astronomy fans and love the night sky. We were just, you know, thought, well, that might be interesting to do something like that. As far as maybe, I had maybe mentioned ATV rides. Clearly, I heard the opposition against that and I sort of agree because it would just be noisy and dusty. And I don't really want to listen to people driving ATVs. It doesn't really go with the vibe of a quiet nature retreat. So I think these were just thoughts that I had put in a paragraph when I was filling out the application of what, you know, ideas that might be of interest to guests or indoor family members.
This, also, this plan seems to be very open-ended, your business plan. What, you mentioned in your application, other activities a couple of times. So what exactly? Because I get the feeling that some of the neighbors are worried about what this could become over time. So can you define other activities?
I understand the concern that that's pretty vague. This, to be honest, this, it don't even really have a formal business plan because it was considered to be just, you know, permission to rent the units when we're not using them. It wasn't a formalized business. So I'd be glad to talk to my neighbors and/or the county to maybe, you know, we come up with things that I definitely am not going to do. And if that would be helpful for everybody involved.
And how would you, the 500-square-foot house, is that a home in which your son is living now?
That's correct.
Okay. And then what is the intended use of a clubhouse?
A gathering place that's indoors for, if, for example, you know, all 27, 30 members of my family, we all get together, have a kitchen that we can cook in, that we can use bathrooms, take a shower. As far as, there was a comment earlier about a laundromat. No, we just need to have a washing machine and dryer so people can, you know, wash their clothes and, you know, we can wash the bedding. So the use was just a gathering space for family and/or if there was guests on the property that they could use it as well.
And I think my last question is your application mentioned part-time staff. And I think another, one of my concerns is that with all with part-time staff, and I know you have family you say are gonna be kind of monitoring things, but a family are not there and staff are not there, are issues going to be resolved? Complaints from neighbors or maybe a party gets out of hand?
Well, the employees are probably going to be family members, first off. I don't think there's gonna be outside employees necessarily. I don't anticipate there being a lot of rentals where I have to hire people to take care of this. As far, what was the second part of your question? I'm sorry, about, oh, who are they gonna call? The family members live on the property. Cole lives there now. I live in Tucson. First off, I don't think I would allow anybody to stay there if one of us wasn't there on the property. And I would make that a condition for sure of rental. I would not rent the property if I wasn't there or my son wasn't there.
Thank you. This is all, Madam Chair.
Mr. Limbach?
So I owe an apology to the commissioner and to the staff because initially I was inclined to approve this with a couple of added conditions. And I'm at a point where I do not believe, under any conditions, I would approve it, just even based on the overwhelming objection of the neighbors. So I'm going to retract my original intent to motion a couple of additional conditions unless another commissioner would like to take that over.
Thank you.
Chairman?
Mr. Montgomery?
One quick comment and advise me if it is appropriate or not. But there are, as Commissioner Limbach has stated, this is a pretty open-ended proposal. I don't really have a question. And there are a lot of questions. I've been writing them down. Many were proposed to us. And I do understand your intent, heartfelt and family-oriented, and it's all a beautiful thing. As a family effort, you have every right to proceed and go do that. And I would advise you to do it. And then play that out for a while and see how it works before you can turn it into an enterprise. It just seems too open-ended today with too many unanswered questions and a very organized opposition that may get to know you better in a little while and maybe y'all could work something out that way. But for now, it seems like a family-oriented endeavor and that's a beautiful thing. As a commercial business, I'm not so sure.
Does anyone else have any comments or questions? Mr. Young?
No.
Does anyone on the commission wish to take up items four and five as additional conditions? Or are we going to let that stay on the table? Hearing none. Let's move forward. Mr. Taylor, your summary and recommendation, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Based on the factors in favor of approval, staff recommends approval of docket SU 2420 to allow guest lodging with the following conditions. Guest lodging visitors shall access the site via Cochise Stronghold Road. Quiet hours shall be observed between 10:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m. seven days per week. Guest areas shall be kept in sanitary condition. Temporary refuse in animal waste receptacles shall be appropriately sized and designed so as not to create an attractive nuisance for wildlife or pests. And the standard conditions relative to permitting timelines and modifications would still apply to this application. And that concludes the recommendation, Madam Chair. But I would like to state one thing. The applicant, per the pre-application meeting, mailed letters to property owners within 900 feet, not receiving any significant opposition. I'm not aware of any responses at all to the letters. I would also like to state that we did mail out, obviously, notification letters. And the folks that called that were interested in more details were provided instructions how to access the application online because it is publicly accessible. So that option is here. I understand that some folks may not be aware of that. Some folks did not ask the question. But we strongly encourage folks to, if they have specific questions, to either contact the applicant or access the application using the website. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. I'm contemplating asking if we want to table this on behalf of the applicant so she can complete her detailed plan, communicate with her neighbors, and take that up at another time. Okay, Nathan, would you like, would you like to articulate that for me?
I think you did it well.
Okay. Mr. Watkins has made a motion to table this to, to another month. Let's say January, please. And Mr. Saunders has seconded that motion. This is an effort to help neighbors get positive results, both the applicant and the neighbors. So I hope that's all right with you. And, Ms. Gregory? All right, let's take a vote on the table. Mr. Limbach?
Aye.
Mr. Montgomery?
Is aye to table.
Chair votes aye. Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Fickett?
Aye.
Mr. Mardzki?
Aye.
And Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Staff, if you'd please move this to a January meeting time. I don't think we have to give any notice about appealing to the board. We're not at that point yet, and I thank you all for your patience. It's time for the planning director's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to you. Again, we appreciate, uh, your service to Cochise County on this commission. Excuse me. Um, so we do have a busy docket load next month and now a little bit busier.
Sorry.
Um, we do have a down zoning, two down zonings, one up zoning, and three special uses. Uh, one is a shooting range, one is an RV park, and one is a, um, lodging, another guest lodging. So we'll have two.
The election for the chair and vice.
Yes, and as you know, we'll have a new board supervisor seated in January. Two commissioners have been reappointed. Kim and Jerry have been reappointed. Mr. Saunders has not yet been reappointed, but I'm having a discussion, excuse me, with Mr. Antonori on Friday. Um, and I think we can get him reappointed if, um, Mr. Antonori, Antonori nominates him. And that is all I have.
Thank you. Do we have any news on Mr. Raymaker's schedule?
Mr. Raymaker's schedule?
Code compliance?
There is a, um, hearing officer meeting in January.
Okay.
I believe it's.
So there's no calendar there yet? I have a couple of things I'm watching.
Yeah. I believe it's, it's January twenty-third. Don't quote me.
Good.
But we'll get it on the, the, um, department calendar.
Okay. Thank you. I want to say thank you to staff. Great year we've had. Thank you to the commission. I think we have a wonderful commission. We take care on every item put in front of us and Merry Christmas to all of you.
Merry Christmas.
Meeting adjourned.